And there we are. And I would like to welcome everybody to the next session, which will be on IHS and how it can work. And we want to discuss some of the findings. We will not go through the study itself and show you a lot of charts and pictures and these things and texts, because that is, of course, not interesting. That is rather boring, and we don't want to be boring. So I would like to welcome Hans De Witt, Betty Lesk and Elspeth Jones, who were the authors together with me in the study. And I know, Betty, for you, it's already quite late in the day. For the others, not so much, because we are in Europe, one of the aspects, of course, of online work. So without further ado, let us start with the first aspect. In the last decades, we have seen global issues rising at an alarming rate. The climate change becomes more dramatic every day. Global political situations are constantly changing, and, let's face it, not always to the better. The Sustainable Development Goals of the United Nations have become a key issue for many universities and societies. Now, yeah, and let's not forget COVID-19, right? Which has disrupted not only internationalisation in higher education, but societies as a whole this year, and we don't know how long that will last. In order to start the debate, I would like to ask, under these conditions, what do you three think is the value of IHS? Where and how can it help? Let's start with Australia. Betty.
Thank you, Uwe. And good evening, or good afternoon, or good morning, everyone, wherever you happen to be in the world. Well, for me, I look at all of these issues on the screen, and I think that they all require action from out everyone in the community, in society. So the very value of IHS, I think, is that it does involve people from outside of the academy, and that it should be, therefore, very purposeful and focused on learning from the community about their response to these issues, but also bringing new research and knowledge to their attention, so that we can get some real action happening and some change happening. And universities can do that by providing information, by providing updates on research, as we've seen them doing in the COVID-19 situation, but also in relation to those other issues. But really focusing on how, I think it really means they have to think very, really carefully about how to actually do that and how to bring their knowledge to the community through, for example, joint projects, maybe funded jointly by different community groups, governments, et cetera. And I'll have some more to say about that a bit later.
Okay, and what is your take on it, Elspeth?
I think it's important to remember that all of these global issues begin with some local solutions as well. And I think, you know, we've got to work together within our own institutions, within our own communities, in order to help to try and deliver some of these solutions. But it also reminds me, I think, that we need to be thinking, not just internationally, but interculturally in delivering all of these solutions. And Dr. Huland mentioned internationalisation at home and the intercultural dimension of all of these issues. And we need to work together at different levels. And I think that's what IHS is about, thinking about global and local together, bringing the local to the global and the global to the local. So we'll all talk about these things a bit more later, I think.
Hans, do you agree?
Yeah, I absolutely agree with what Betty and Elspeth are saying. But let's also be very clear. I mean, all these issues, even COVID-19, not as COVID-19, but previous pandemics like Ebola, SARS, et cetera, have been on the table already for a long time. So there's nothing new. Also, we don't have to forget that they were already part of our definitions of internationalisation before we came to international high education for society. It was in the three missions of the higher education institutions, research, teaching and service to society, already in the 1990s definition by Jay Knight. It was a very clear expression in the 2015 update definition, where we said that institutions have to make a meaningful contribution to society. So internationalisation, high education for society is mainly to re-emphasise the importance that internationalisation is not, as also our keynote speaker said, not a means in itself, but has a very important role for society and has to be embedded in the other missions of the university, research and teaching. And we only have to be aware that the planet is in danger. And if we don't do that as institutions of high education in the local, regional, national and global context, then we are having a risk that we don't make that meaningful contribution to society that we want to emphasise.
Absolutely, and just to add to that, also in the EU project, 2009 to 2012, the IMPY project on mapping and profiling indicators for internationalisation, already social engagement showed up as a fifth goal dimension. And Hutzig also mentions that comprehensive internationalisation means to act on the global forces that enter the local. So yes, of course, the discussion was always there, and we always also considered it. And I think, as we also discussed when we wrote the study, it's not about saying something totally new. It's more about putting an emphasis on a connection which so far has not been there so much. Just for the, those of you who did not read the study yet, which I, of course, strongly recommend, it's a very nice read. There is a part in the report of the European Project on a New Framework for Community Engagement, which said, in a paraphrased way, that it is deplorable how social engagement has to compete with excellence in research and internationalisation for resources and priorities. And I think that is the point that we also wanted to make. It's not about competing, it's rather about something else, isn't it? It's about the link between the two. I mean, we consider IHS an important instrument, and it seems that it is located somewhere between internationalisation and social engagement, like in this Venn diagram, where it doesn't say that IHS is everything in internationalisation. It's also not everything in social engagement, right? But we also learned that so far, strategies for social engagement and social responsibility, which is quite different from engagement, are rather disconnected from internationalisation strategies. And yet, we agreed that the link is somehow the crucial thing. So how do you suggest, the three of you, this link can be established? And the still existing gap between these two important areas in higher education can be bridged? Hans, give it a start.
Yeah, as I said, I mean, the link, we have to be careful that we don't see internationalisation, high education for society as something extra or marginal or fragmented. It has to be integrated into our overall activities as higher education institutions, but also at the national level and at the global level. So we have to, when we talk about research, the social engagement and international collaboration research, which is even more important than ever, as we have seen to solve the SDGs, we have to bring in the social engagement into our research collaboration. When we talk about internationalisation of teaching and learning, we have to bring in that social dimension. So it is not something like we have three boxes or something like that, but we have really one box in which everything has to be brought together and made that link much more stronger to really make something possible in a more proactive way than we have done before. We always have been much more implicit in it. And there's also the danger, as the first question this morning was addressing, that we use this for society as a kind of public relations thing, which is what happens a lot with new labels that we put on things. We have to be careful that it is not just a PR, but it is more important, as also the president of the RDA said, it's very important that it is at our heart of our activities, what we do when we talk about internationalisation at home, when we talk about internationalisation abroad, research, et cetera.
I could not agree more. It somehow reminds sometimes of the dangers we've seen with the discussion of impact. And suddenly, everything was called impact, whether it was impacting or not. Elspeth, what is your take on it?
Yeah, I think it's important to look at this. I think the Venn diagram suggests that we're not really thinking about it. And I think it's very important to remember there's a lot of this happening already. And I think Dr. Huland, again, she referred to this. So having, making it clear, being clear that there are many such activities which are happening in our universities, but they're not necessarily recognised by the institution, they're not necessarily spread very well, they're not necessarily replicated. So the thing that we can do through a more strategic approach and by incorporating these two ideas together is to begin that recognition and begin that the viewing these issues as important. So when we're, if we're thinking about strategic level, making sure that within the internationalisation strategy of an institution, the social engagement dimension is really, really clear, that it's not simply about mobility or student recruitment or partnership with institutions for mutual, so for example, collaborative research or through study abroad or whatever, but that we think about the potential for social engagement when we work with our partners abroad. Equally, when we think about our local social engagement strategy, that we remember that there are international aspects or intercultural aspects of our social engagement strategy that we should also make sure are incorporated. And so I think, I think the, making sure we recognise what's already happening, but building it in a strategic level will then allow it to be much more than simply a token response and allow people to learn what's happening within the institution much more and to spread those ideas. And it needs to be real, authentic engagement, I believe. This is the other important factor we need. It's not just a, I saw the point about the PR, and I think it is potentially useful for public relations. And we all know it's quite difficult in terms of getting an understanding of internationalisation across the institution, not to get that across society more broadly, especially in these difficult times. But I think we need to see how we can embed these issues in both strategies, mutually embedding of these ideas.
Yeah, thank you very much. I think this is the point you made, especially about how we think about the effects of what we do and whether it is about promoting internationalisation or not, rather the effects of internationalisation. I totally agree. For us, as we said, as Hans said before, it's not a means in itself. So therefore, it's not about making people love internationalisation, it's making people love what internationalisation does with you. And that is especially for the public when we see the disengagement also between universities and the society at large, the discussion about anti-intellectualism and so forth. So yes, I would fully agree. What is your opinion on it, Betty? How can we bridge this link?
So I'm, like Elspeth, I'm coming at this initially from a strategy perspective and thinking that it's really important when you're looking at the internationalisation strategy to look at the social engagement strategy, but also to look at the teaching and learning strategy, the education strategy, and how those three strategies might fit together. So I think we could almost add two more circles here. We could have education, teaching and learning at the top that intersects with the other three, and we could have research at the bottom that equally intersects with all of those other circles. So those strategies need to speak to each other, and they need to be, there needs to be some really careful planning and also some evaluation of the impact of some of the work that's done. And I might just give an example, if I've got time, Uwe, of a smart city strategy that was implemented at Latrobe several years ago. Now, the Latrobe campus is a little bit out of the centre of the city of Melbourne, so there's not a space available. And there's a need to move people around the campus and to build some more campus community. So the idea was to create a smart city approach, and that was part of the research agenda. It was also part of the teaching and learning agenda in many courses. And it was also part of the social engagement agenda in that it brought community groups in to give advice on building a smart city. But there was also research that was happening that fed back into the community. And on an international, on the internationalisation strategy, it could connect with that through bringing international expertise in, but also what was being learned in that project, going back out to international partners. So I think it's about connecting all of those dots and having lots of deep conversations and imagining all sorts of projects and possibilities that wouldn't otherwise be possible without all of those things coming together within, by expanding the borders of the institution to encompass a much broader range of actors and dimensions, as we'll go on to talk about, I think, in the next slide.
Exactly, you made a perfect transition to the next slide. Because when we worked on the concept, it was clear that we have to look at different dimensions of it, that how the metrics came up. So we discussed the issue of goals. So what is IHS for? Without a goal, you don't have to act, because then it's only actionism, right? But it was also who in the university could be an actor in this activity? Students, academics, administrators and others? Target groups in society? I remember I was flabbergasted at the end how large the list of possible target groups in the society really is. Then the question of the involvement at the university. So is it individual? What Elspeth also said, most of the projects are enthusiastic projects, which are not thought to be IHS yet, but which are done by individuals. Some are partial involvement, so you have institutes or faculties or offices doing that. And in very, very, very few cases, we could see something which you could call holistic. So a whole institution buying into an idea that we would consider to be IHS. Then all the dimensions of internationalisation. I think that is the fascinating thing, that it doesn't mean you have to do something special, only this way works. There are many ways. The question of how people move then, these activities, in these activities between university and society. So that you have, on the one hand, just projects where the university, in a sense of a community outreach, brings things into society, other things where people come into the university. We know outside IHS, the classical things are, for example, the nights of research or the children's universities. And then we also discuss the beneficiaries. So looking at, is a project mainly intended to benefit the society? Or is it looking at the mutual benefits of all of them? And looking at your experiences before and also after the study, of course, what of these things do you consider specifically important? And if possible, can you give to the audience also some ideas on that? And I just want to mention again, you can post questions to the attendees. You can post questions via the question and answer tool, and they will be answered either during the Q and A or even afterwards by some of us in writing. So make use of that. And the question is now, can you give some striking example that really enthused you and where you said this would be interesting? Let's start this time with Elspeth.
Oh, sorry, hi, yes. So there are too many examples to think of. I think I'm going to start at the bottom, really, with the beneficiaries. Because I think the key thing about all of this is mutual benefit. And if we are to bring the value of internationalisation to a local society or to bring engagement to our international activities, we need to be thinking about how it's benefiting not only the communities that we're working with, but our students and our teaching in general. Because of course, that then, it feeds into, hopefully feeds into the curriculum for other students as well. I'm going to give an example of a spinal injuries clinic that we worked with in Nepal, where it was physiotherapy students who were given the opportunity to travel to Nepal, to work with an existing partnership that we had, working with a spinal injuries clinic, and to be able to use their physiotherapy skills in a very, very different context. So first of all, the students were able to learn very much from the type of injuries that they were seeing, that they wouldn't have seen based back at home. But equally, they were able to make a contribution to what was going on in the spinal injuries clinic by bringing perhaps different techniques that hadn't been seen before in the Nepali situation. So students and the clinic benefited significantly. But then that was brought back to what was happening in the home curriculum. It was obviously fed into the work that students were doing with other students and possibly, hopefully, with their future work as physiotherapists. And eventually, this opportunity, well, it continued and eventually was brought into the formal curriculum as an opportunity for all students. So I think the point about mutual benefit is that, okay, that's an example perhaps of what might be seen as a developing country. But the point being that students have got the opportunity to learn from any experience of this kind. So the fact that it's a developing country, it should not be seen as, say, a Western group of students going and giving something to a developing country. They were learning just as much as they were trying to give. So I think really, the mutual benefit of all of this is absolutely crucial.
Thanks very much. And what is your take on that, Hans?
Well, yeah, following up on what Elspeth said, of course, it's very important. If we look at the actors within higher education institutions, basically, all actors have to be involved. So students, faculty, institutional leadership, external stakeholders related to university. Much more important is what are the target groups into society and how do they benefit from this whole focus on internationalisation of high education for society? And one aspect, Betty, Elspeth already referred to is, of course, we still have a power relationship between the North and the South. So beneficiaries and target groups would be that we give much more voice to the developing and emerging world into what are the key social impacts for society and on our planet. To break this power relationship where we think in the Western world we can dominate how we do research, what are the key aspects for teaching and learning? That's a very broad, but still very important part for the whole decolonisation debate that is happening as well. The second is, there are a lot of groups that now are isolated from both internationalisation and from solving the problems. Minorities, refugees. There's a whole lot of racism. The whole Black Lives Matters movement, should we not underestimate how that also was part of our internationalisation policy? That we were really, in that sense, also discriminating and excluding those groups from our work that we do. So there's a lot to do still. And that creates the whole challenge, how we do respond to that. And somebody in the questions also asked, well, how do we tackle the issue of well intentions and then getting not the always intended direction? That's a very crucial point. We can say all this, and I say it as well, but how do we make the difference? So how do we not have the risk that we come to the opposite? That we still have a power relationship with the North is more important? That we still exclude all kinds of loops from our work? That should be very central in my view when we talk about internationalisation for society, that we really make it not an ivory tower issue, but a societal issue. That's in essence.
Great. I'm just rushing a little bit that we're staying in the time. Betty, what would be a good example from your side that you might want to add?
Well, I wanted to speak just a little bit about dimensions of internationalisation and say that whilst we focus internationalisation, particularly in people's minds, their mindsets, if you like, tend to be about mobility. And I can easily think of examples also of IHS projects that have been mobility-based projects. But I think there's a great deal that can be done at home, and I think both Elspeth and Hans have touched on some of those things in their comments. But I wanted to particularly emphasise the value then to involving different actor groups within the institution to, in internationalising the curriculum at home, which of course naturally lends itself to working with community groups and to getting to know what some of the issues of, say, refugees are in local communities and working with those groups to bring their issues forward. So in that regard, I think that focusing attention on some of those issues at home is a perfect way to expand both our perception of internationalisation and the range of activities that go with it into the IHS space using a much broader range of actor groups within the higher education institution than we would ever have thought might be involved. So we're going right down to the level of, we're not right down to the level, we're going across the institution, looking at some of the junior staff as well as leaders. We're taking it right out of the international office. We've actually got to get it right into the academic heartland
Uwe, we don't hear you.
Sorry, yes, I forgot my mic. So the point is that the description of IHS has been cited by Dr. Huland. So just very briefly, to make clear to everybody who is in the audience, the three characteristics that we identified were that these activities have to be intentionally, purposefully seeking to provide benefit to the wider community, to be carefully planned and evaluated, and the impact made visible. That's the first part. The second is that they have to involve the wider community at home or abroad. So it can be both, as we say, global to the local or vice, or the other way around. And that they can appear and occur across all the three areas, research, education and third mission. And as we are running out of time, maybe just briefly, can each of you state one of the projects that you find particularly fascinating in this context? Let's start in the final round with Betty.
Betty, mute it.
That's catching that thing. The capacity building of speech pathology and audiology project in Cambodia that was run by one of our academic staff members at Latrobe. The reason I find this project interesting is because students from the class in their clinical placements, speech pathology students went to Cambodia. And in that process of assisting, for example, young children who had hair, lip and cleft palate to swallow properly, saved their lives. But also, they were not just working with those children, they were working with local community groups to teach them how to teach other children to swallow. So this was a project that had wide-ranging impact on the local community, was funded by the Australian government, supported by NGOs across Cambodia, worked with families and carers, wider community, absolutely a great example, and led entirely by the academic. The international office knew nothing about it until she reported on it in a project brief.
Thank you very much. Elspeth, what is your favourite project?
I'm going to talk perhaps not about something that's in the document itself, but... but I think we haven't perhaps talked as much about the, the local dimension. I mentioned earlier the internet, the, the idea of internationalization at home. And in this case, we need to think about how we can bring international to the local community or the local international elements into the university. And so one of the things that we did was to set up a series of volunteering opportunities with intercultural or international dimensions. Now Betty mentioned the, the idea of working with refugees and asylum seekers. We also worked with local faith groups, for example, or community groups with different nationalities. And so with, within the, the community, the local community, there are opportunities to find these studies or activities that we can engage our students in and bring them, either bring them eventually into the curriculum or just really to widen their, their perspectives and help them to understand the international and intercultural and bring something new to the, 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 the local community as well. And the importance, I think, of some of this is to emphasize the value that we give to these different partnerships and relationships. So for example, with refugees and asylum seekers, our students would go and perhaps help with some English language tuition or help to get through some of the bureaucracy that refugees were facing, like bank accounts or working with, you know, government issues and bureaucracy. But equally, we brought refugees into the university to give seminars, to give lectures and to give them the opportunity to talk about their experiences. And this not only helped to enlighten people in the university, but also showed that we valued the contributions that refugees were bringing into the local society. So I think, you know, we've got to remember different aspects of this mutual benefit.
Thanks so much. And to wrap it up, Hans, what is your brief example you would like to give?
Because we have little time. I, I will bring two examples together of how we did it in the old way and what then should be better. And both are from nursing schools, one in Norway and the other one in Colombia. In Norway, there was a nursing school that said, well, we are very internationalized because we sent our nursing students to Africa. And in Colombia, they said, we are very international because we ask all our students to be proficiency and B two level in English. And then I asked the question, yeah, but where are they going to work? And in Norway, they're working in hospitals with patients from Pakistan and from Turkey, all the immigrant population, but are not prepared to understand how those patients perceive being ill. In Ecuador and in Colombia, they were working basically with indigenous groups in indigenous languages. So I said, what does the use for being in, both or in Africa or in, in knowing English when you have to do the opposite? So that's where the local and international got something completely wrong. They were forced by accreditation agencies to do mobility and they were forced by accreditation agencies to go teaching, learning English. But the reality is they have to understand the local context and the local context is very international and intercultural as well. So that's the way of shift we have to do in our thinking. And that's very essential when we talk about internationalization for society. We have to look differently at what we mean with internationalization, what we're going to do and how we are going to do it than the old traditional way of internationalization.
Thanks so much. Thanks to all of you for that. And we have a couple of questions. I think in terms of time, we stick to one question right now live. And then we can answer the other ones that come in later by typing. That's a huge advantage actually to, to a real life event. And I would choose the question asked by Justina Gjazinska, which is, can you give us word on encouragements and how to actually close the gap in the drastic disconnect between strategy making and strategy implementation at the universities? Who would like, who would feel like doing that when it comes to I H S, obviously? Whoever feels, open your mic and do it.
Okay. So I think that this requires thinking about how people are rewarded for the work that they do and how they're prepared for it. So how they're prepared for it, how they're supported through it and how they're rewarded for their achievements. And I think there are various ways of doing that through awards, grants, grants for I H S, for example, rewards for engagement in, in I H S, recognition of, for many people involved in these projects, the time that they spend working on them, that is well outside of the normal time they would be expected to work on projects. So many people who are engaged in these projects are passionate about the work that they're doing and they deserve to be recognized for it. Often they're hidden. I think that also sometimes perhaps you're achieving more than you think you are. And what you need to do is start to look at what is already happening that perhaps you don't already know about. So I hope that's encouraging and also useful.
Thank you very much. So I think that gives us still the time for one last question, which is from Svetlana Kostrovkina. And her question is, were there any specific follow-up strategies on the clinical placements to monitor the overall impact after the project was over? Who would typically initiate the placements? The developing nations or the Western side? Who would like to answer that?
Well, that's, if I may, that's a very-
All of you want, that's fine. Do it quickly.
It's, it's in itself an interesting question. As I, I already mentioned, there is a power relationship. And so we have to be very careful that the questions that are important for developing society have to be answered by them and not by us. And we have to look at placements or whatever, always in that context of what is in the benefit of whom? Is it in the benefit for a Western individual? Is it in the benefit of the institution in the Western? Or are we really working for helping the societal issues in those countries? That's very essential, in my view.
Thank you very much. I'm, I'm sorry, folks. I know you all want to share in there and it, it totally makes sense. But you can, you can also, also share that maybe still in writing. But the point is that we are running out of time as it is with these events. I would love to just thank you very, very much, all three of you, for your engaging activity here and, and the thoughts you brought in. And also, of course, not the least the fun I had to work with you in, in the study phase. And we would love to do that again, probably.